Okay. It is March 28, 2023, and it is 6:48 PM, and I call this meeting to order. And so the first thing I'll do is call roll call Mayor Protam Villalobos. She's there. Is she unmuted?
Sonia, can you unmute yourself? She should be able to.
Okay, I'll just go on. Councilmember Bunker is absent. Councilmember Styler?
Here.
Councilmember McClan?
Here.
Councilmember Clinton?
Here.
And I'm Mayor Glace. Okay.
She did type it in the chat, but that could be anyone.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta hear.
Does she know we have to hear her?
Well, she should be hearing.
So, yeah.
She muted? Yeah, sent her a message on here, too.
We were 35 minutes late last night.
Did you call her?
I, I texted her and Adrian texted her.
Somebody wanna roll down there real fast and help her out?
She's at the hospital. Her mother-in-law's there.
I wanna just call her. I can call her cell phone and put her on speaker.
There you go.
Hey, Sonia, we're trying to get you on Zoom, but we seem to be having you on mute. Is it okay if I put you on speakerphone and you participate that way until we get the Zoom figured out? Okay. All right. Our take and roll. Are you here?
Here. Okay, thank you, Sonia. Okay. For the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then to the Texas flag?
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
And remain in the name of God. Thank you, Heavenly Father, for this time together and for this beautiful city of Martindale. Lord God, please be with us and give us discernment as we make these very important decisions. Lord God, we just always thank you for the gift of salvation in Jesus' name. Amen. Okay, tonight, um, do we have any public comments first? Okay, um, then we'll move on. We have presentations from the plans.
Hi, everybody. My face is a familiar one by now. For those who don't know me, I'm Bernardo. I'm the development director for Langsola. And today, we're here to provide a bit of an update in regards to, you know, what's been happening with our plans on this property, provide a bit of context, you know, what's happened today and kind of what are the next, next steps. So the agenda that we've got, if you can just scroll down, Adrian, please. As I said, want to provide a bit of context about the property at hand, summary of the events, provide a bit of the summary of the last planning and zoning workshop that we had to talk about what was discussed there and the action that we were committed to. Talk a little bit about the wastewater investigation that was carried in the last months. And then after that, talk about next steps and be open to receive any comments or questions. Go to the next page. Okay, so the property was acquired by Langsola and D'Sara back in September 2021. Again, for everybody's knowledge, we're talking about three tracks. Track one, which is the northern one, which is in the ETJ, 169 acres. Track two, which, you know, hasn't been a point of conversation lately. And, you know, we're still thinking what to do with that property, has 24 acres. And then track three, which is a 32 acre south of Highway 80. For everybody that's heard about our property, they're well aware of what land we're talking about. Through the last year, through that year, September to August, there was constant communication with the city, talking out potential opportunities of how that land could be developed, different uses. And there was a lot of collaboration there with the city. We initially had the intention of doing a development agreement or commence negotiations with a development agreement. I think everybody knows how that went when we presented that in September last year, which of course was refused by the Planning and zoning Commission. And the refusal was to commence a process to negotiate a potential development agreement, not even a, an actual formal development agreement or a site plan or anything. But it was very clear for us that there was a lot of opposition from the community in regards to what those thoughts and that vision was. So we decided to, you know, take several steps back. We had a, an event with a community here at the Martinell Schoolhouse, where plenty of people from the community came to us. We heard them out and essentially there were a lot of findings out of that. But the key ones that I'd like to highlight is that the community expressed that they would like developments to comply with the city ordinances and best practice flood prevention mechanisms, because we understand how this land is prone to flooding. And also that the existing road infrastructure, road and infrastructure capacity may not be suitable for high density, for, for high density projects. And that tiny homes and land lease communities were not encouraged by the, the community. So we've heard that in a lot of different things. And from that, we came back in January this year to talk about what alternatives we had in mind for particularly track one and track three. In that last workshop that we had with the Planning and zoning Commission, we talked about, you know, what could be done by right, which is subdivision of one acre lots or two other alternatives, which would be to do half acre lots with septics, but annexing to the city through a development agreement. Or alternatively, doing one-third acre lots, connecting that project into the city's wastewater treatment facilities. And we also expressed in that meaning that, you know, we've owned the property since September 2021. We've been trying to find what to do with it. And we're at a point in time where we had sort of three months to do an investigation on, you know, alternative one or two, which is the half acre lots or one-third acre lots. And that we were more than happy to spend the time and money within collaboration with the city to see if there was any opportunity to connect the project to the wastewater treatment plant and see if any infrastructure could be funded by, via a pit. So if we go to the next page, I won't dwell on it because you've seen that page before, which was what we presented in the last planning and zoning commission workshop. But essentially it was showing, you know, what could be done by right and then the, the two alternatives, which I've just described. But we go to the next slide. So what's, what's happened since to, to now? We've had weekly meetings with the city staff, with Adrian and with Ms. Catherine Glace to see these alternatives. What we heard sort of from the get-go at the beginning of those sessions, what that the city will eventually regard to have a wastewater treatment plant on the western side of Martinell to cater for future growth there. And that it would be very difficult for us to connect into the existing wastewater treatment plant and that there was probably no capacity within the existing treatment plant to connect. So even since September 2021, we've been trying to get that question answered. You know, what's the current capacity? What can we do to connect to the wastewater treatment facilities and infrastructure? And even today, we, we haven't been able to resolve that. What, what we've understood from the city in our last conversations for three, this last three months was that the only way for this to work is to build a new wastewater treatment plant and to see if that could be funded via a pit. So from that, we spoke with wastewater treatment consultants and, you know, companies that we've been working with on other large properties that, that we own. They're experts in the matter. And they, we were able to determine a viable location for a new wastewater treatment plant, sizing requirements for it and essentially what the cost of that infrastructure would be. That is important to understand then if a pit mechanism would be able to then fund that infrastructure. And as many of you would, would know, the way that the pit works is a mechanism that allows the cost of the infrastructure to be recovered in time through taxes or additional taxes that get put onto the property owners of that, that land. So the city had a pit consultant, which we consulted with. I think we met with this person two or three times. And essentially the findings of that was, or we, you know, we determined the cost was going to be around $6 million. Or we didn't determine our, the wastewater experts determined was going to be around $6 million to put in the infrastructure. The pit consultant advised that to set up the, the pit that would elevate the funding capacity to around $8 million. And when he did all of these scenarios, he essentially determined that it was unviable for the pit to work financially. It was not economically or financially viable to fund 8 million through a property that was going to just yield 320 homes. The taxing post to those homes was going to be excessive. And also the value of that land was not going to be able to support the bonds that would be emitted to support the pit. Essentially what he advised was that in order for that to work, at least the density would have to be double that amount, which we've been there in the past. We've looked at, you know, double the density and we had a lot of opposition from the community. So it's, it's something that I think we've heard loud and clear. And it'd be unreasonable for us to go through the same path and obtain a different result from the community. So with that in mind, it seems to us that essentially the only alternative that we have at this stage is to proceed with the subdivision of one acre lots. Since then, in this kind of last week, we have heard different messages about the wastewater treatment capacity, which I think probably Rika can explain a bit more about it.
Yeah. And so Rika Keepers with Keepers Land Planning. So met with the previous mayor last week. We did go through and, and how the wastewater treatment plant works, the lift stations, everything. In that discussion, he did show me that how the tanks are operated and the different, there's three separate tanks. I'm sure you guys are aware of that. The main tank holds the incoming water from the Crockett Lift Station. Will both, all three, all the two, two of the lift stations actually feed into the Crockett Lift Station. So that lift station is basically the primary and largest lift station, which then feeds in to the main, to, well, to the wastewater treatment plant. The center pond does use natural biological processes. And so it just slowly drains into that main tank. Once the center tank gets to a certain capacity, the water flows to the evaporation tank. So the larger, the two larger tanks that are, well, they're the same, they're all the same size, but they're right beside that main tank. And once though these get to a certain extent or capacity, then the irrigation system, the effluent water is then processed through the irrigation. And when the first permit was applied for, for TCUQ, it was at a lesser capacity than was actually built for. So, which would be the 57 gallons per day capacity, which is what the permit is for. And there are monthly irrigation ports the city has to keep to stay in compliance, to meet those standards for TCUQ permit. And I say all this to say that there is a possibility the capacity, the current permit is less than 15% than the actual capacity of the 57,000 gallon tank, which one was originally submitted was for a lesser capacity. So that's interesting to us. We have made open records requests to obtain and have a better understanding of the situation and have some peace of mind. And but with all that said, you know, considering the feedback from the community, we are looking to do those one acre tracks now, because we just think maybe that's the best option.
What's, what's the best option again? Say, say that last part.
Subdividing into one acre tracks and putting septic system on each.
Oh, each of the tracks that you have septic systems individually?
Right.
Not use our system.
Correct. But we're here for questions.
So if we just go down to the next page, essentially kind of the, the next steps and what I've been discussing mainly about is, is track one, right? Which at the moment, the, the next text for us is to submit a preliminary platification for 110 one acre lots in, that are located again in Martinell's ETJ. And essentially it would be for, you know, unrestricted, single-family use, but restricted through an HOA. I think we've, we've met plenty of times in the past. We've discussed about how we manage the properties that, that we build and the communities that we built, which is something that we do standard across all of our projects. Because at the end of the day, we do want to be proud of the developments that we do. But again, in, in regards and that, and in order to do so, the way that we manage and control them is to establishing an HOA. And that controls, for example, if manufactured homes are installed, how old they can be. They cannot be older than.
You're talking about the ETJ? You're talking about the?
I'm talking about the ETJ, what's on track one. And just showing there, there's, you know, that's an image of a manufactured home. I think I showed that last meeting. But essentially, if you'd ask any person about the quality of that home and how it looks and if people live in it, I, you know, I know that I myself would definitely live in it. It's a beautiful house and.
Clarification, is that a, is that a, a, it's not a side of God.
Modular?
No, modular or, yeah.
That's a hard manufactured home. It's a three.
It came, it came in, it came in all wheels.
It came in on all wheels. The only, the only thing that they did on that one in particular is they did a garage afterwards, which that part, which is on the left-hand side, that little portion was stick-built. But the, the rest is essentially just manufactured home. So that's what kind of, we've explored, I think what I want to say, we've explored all of alternatives. We've been collaborative with the city staff. And likewise, we've laid down all the cards. We've been, you know, as transparent, you know, anybody can be. And I think that where we're at is there's no other alternative that we can find but just doing 110 one acre lots in that property. Now on track three.
Wait, excuse me, I had a question. What, on track one, it says unrestricted, single-family use. What, what does that mean?
By that, I, I mean that manufactured homes can be allowed to be installed on that side.
But if they want to build a stick build, they can also do that. They have the option to do either.
I, I want to make a clarification. So we have different types of residential zoning. Certain types of residential zoning do allow for manufactured homes. Other types of residential zoning do not. So I understand this is a pending application. I think that's being considered separately from, from the ETJ discussion, correct?
Yeah, well, on, on that one, essentially because it's in the ETJ, it doesn't have any zoning. So what we will abide with is, of course, with all of the city ordinances, you know, ensuring that impervious cover is looked at and respected and complied with, that all the flood prevention is being considered, size of detention ponds to ensure that there's no flood impact to any neighboring properties to the river or any of, of the city of Martinell. So all of, you know, compliance with essentially all of the city ordinances. But again, in regards to the, the zoning, well, it's a unsown land. For track three, this, you know, won't come as a surprise to think in the last planning and zoning meeting. We have already talked about it. And the, the only thing that I want to provide an update on is that, I think around two weeks ago, we formally submitted the application to rezone that tract, increasing the frontage of residential, and that's R1 residential, which does prevent manufactured homes to be built on. Just increasing the frontage of residential to Northwest River Road, which is in accordance with what the community expressed and with what we also understand the city council and planning and zoning also wanted. So that is just a heads up that we've already submitted that. And I think it's set out for the April 20th of April for that to be voted upon. Any questions?
What, this is the right time to ask is what about your dream subdivisions? Are any updates on that?
On that one, so it's already been, you know, subdivided, it's been registered.
All been sold?
No, there's still, no, 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 there's, there's still three lots available.
Okay. In track three, and I asked you this before about those white barn structures on the far end corner of, of track three and the one that's in the middle. Are you still planning to eliminate those historic structures?
Yeah, the, the intention is to take them down, see what can be salvaged, perhaps reused as either kind of a, a sculptural element or something within the future commercial area. Or alternatively donated as well.
But the two buildings that are at the very end corner would be in the supposed residential zone.
Yes, that is correct.
And the one that's in the middle is somewhat in commercial or?
That one is still in the commercial area.
You could maybe use that for a commercial purpose?
These buildings are really old and they wouldn't really be ADA compliant. It would take more money to salvage just the building to make it safe.
That's a valid point. Yes. Very, very valid.
We're not very comfortable with that.
Okay, good. I, I just, that was my last question.
Sure.
Yes.
I did, for track one, how are you, how are they planning on selling these? Or how are you planning on selling these? Or is it still going to be a land lease and?
No, it's not going to be a land lease community anymore. After the community session that we had in November, was very clear for us to understand that the community didn't want that. So it's just going to be lots sold to the general public. We, we have our own sales team, so we work directly with our customers.
And their waiting list is very long, hundreds of people.
Oh, really? Okay. Well, good for you.
Affordable housing, you know? Yeah.
How does the future development of the smart terminal above you with heavy industrial have any impact on your decisions to have residential in that track? Track one, you're going to have a 2,000 acre development with 70% impervious ground cover to your north.
Yeah, we've, we've heard about what's been happening on the smart terminal and we understand that that's going to be developed in several phases. I think the one that's closest to our development is the, the last of their faces. And I think that although their program is quite optimistic, i- in my view, they've got to deal with flood prevention. There, there's areas in that final stage close to us that is in the 1 in 100 year event. So if they want to do any development there, they would have to go through a LOMER or CLOMER process with FEMA. And if they think that they're going to be developed, this is my opinion. If, if they think that they're going to be developing that and constructing that in the next two years, I think that is very optimistic.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for the update. Was there any more slides? I thought I saw some more that were more descriptive about the density or anything there. This is, this is what you're presenting tonight. They're going to go into their, when they have the next planned zoning. Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, so the next steps is, is we need to prepare, you know, the engineering reports, the layout, the preliminary plat application, all of the documentation for that track one, which of course, you know, it's a big chunk of documentation. Once that is ready, of course, we will be submitting that and going through the formal application and, and voting process.
Okay. In, in, in track one, I, I know we've discussed this about the wellhead protection zone, the Artesian rivers that run underneath there, where we have a gravel basin and then there's clay beneath that. And those Artesian rivers supply the water for our well system. But you still are confident that 110 septic tanks on top of our wellhead protection zone will protect us from any contamination?
Yeah, we've, we've looked into that with quite a lot of detail to understand what things would be restricted with that. And we're fairly comfortable that the authorities that provide or allow septic systems to be installed in accordance with the TCU regulations were way, way over the, the requirement in regards to the distance that is required or restricted from the water well and that area. So. Thank you. No worries.
Well, thank you very much.
For the council's information, the, the issue regarding wastewater treatment capacity has to do with how far, how much land we have to irrigate on. And with the nearby flood hazard restricted area and the size of the lot, our ability to irrigate the full acreage out there is, is constrained. We are permitted at 57,000 gallons. Potential possibly based off a prior engineering report of maybe 85,000 gallons. More, no, up from 57 to 85,000. More, uh, no, up from 57 to 85. So was it less, a little less than 30. So, you know, that's, that's not a lot. That's only a couple hundred homes, um, at the most, so.
Yeah, because it's not a treatment plant, it's a irrigation.
But we couldn't add those 110 homes to our treatment plant then?
Well, there, when you start reaching capacity, you, there, there are certain hurdles and obstacles that the city faces. Um, 110 might be feasible, maybe. That would require more, uh, more detailed assessment other than, you know, buckywindage. Um, as we have now.
We've got issues with our lift stations, we've got issues with our infrastructure.
You still have significant infrastructure requirement to.
All the above.
To connect it. So, um, I'm not saying whether it would make financial sense or not, but just, just so that we have a more complete picture on what the treatment plant capacity is. And I, I said that to you guys about a year ago, I think it was before either of you joined the, the team. But I, I just noticed that, um, so I resend it to your emails. We have that as well.
Okay, again, thanks for your update. We appreciate that. Thanks for coming in.
Appreciate your time.
Thanks.
Okay, we're going to move on to a presentation from Sigma Grafted regarding the land use requirement for, well, this has had, uh, hit numbers 276, let me just tell you what the number is. It's a lot higher than 80 just before the treatment plant. And it's a rather large piece of, of land. So I don't know who's speaking.
I'll start.
Or Grafted.
So Jason O'Shune with Grafted Investments, Sigma Grafted. Um, we're a land development group and we've got a few team members here tonight. Uh, Chris, uh, our engineering firm, and then Julian from the attorney perspective. So I'm gonna.
Excuse me, sir, would you mind stepping forward? We can catch you on the audio.
I was just following their lead.
I was able to get it close to them.
Yeah, that's good. So, um, we're going to share a couple of different, um, pieces here tonight. I, I wanted to, I know we started about a year ago, it was last March or April visiting, uh, with the city. Um, our approach in, in working with, uh, with communities is just that, is understanding your goals, uh, your initiatives, what you guys are trying to accomplish and how do we come together to upgrade or win, uh, for this community? And so that's been our approach the whole time is just understanding where you're at. Uh, what can we do as we obviously, um, have a property that we are looking to develop and moving forward with? Um, and so as it sits where it does, we just wanted to, I want to explain our approach. And, and in that, I know there's been several things that have gone back and forth, uh, where we, we listen and want to truly learn, uh, about this community and, and the best approach. We've offered some ideas, some thoughts, some solutions. Um, and so we're here tonight just to, be able to share with you where we are. Um, I know Chris is going to dive into the actual project, um, and the update there. And then Julian will, uh, provide some, some context as well from a, a previous conversation that we had, um, about infrastructure. That's, that's us. Just want to give you that background.
Chris. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Appreciate the time to present this project to you. I'm Chris Dice, I'm representing Kuhn Engineers. And I'm going to walk through some location information, some, uh, land use information and some of the infrastructure, uh, call it challenges that this, that this property has. So I like the mayor said, this is about 600 acres. It's located on both sides of Highway 80, just east of the intersection of 142. So we are, kind of have a little bit of, of all the jurisdictions included on this one. We have some city limits on the front, uh, on both sides of Highway 80. We're inside the city limits of, of Martindale. We have ETJ both on the north and the half, uh, south half. And then we actually have some unincorporated, kind of, Carbo County in the middle of the property. So, um, from a, from an infrastructure standpoint, um, you know, we've heard a lot about wastewater already tonight and, and about flood control. So, uh, and as we've evaluated this proper, this project, uh, you know, drainage obviously is a big, is a big, uh, issue and something that has to be paid very close attention to. So there's quite a bit of floodplain on this property, um, both on the north and the south side of, of Highway 80. In our investigation, a lot of that is, is due to the way Highway 80 was built years and years ago. So we have a plan and we've talked about this with staff just in very high level. Uh, but we've done some preliminary floodplain studies, some preliminary analysis of what can be done to, uh, help to bring a dual benefit to this area from a drainage standpoint. One, to, you know, to contain some of that floodplain, but also to provide some flood control, uh, detention volume, both on the north and the south side of Highway 80. So part of the project, as you see more detail in our engineering studies that you'll see, is a, uh, we will be going through that CLOMAR process that was, was, uh, referred to earlier. FEMA is always an interesting one to get through, but we know how to do that and, and think this is a really good candidate to, uh, do some volume adding into the floodplain to provide some additional storage so that there's no increase in runoff from stormwater perspective. Um, from a roadway and access perspective, uh, all of our access are becoming off of Highway 80. And let, let me back up a second. If I didn't talk about land use, that maybe is where I should start. As you can see on the exhibit, everything in the, in the, the darker shaded green, that's all open space, uh, floodplain drainage and detention areas. So a lot of open space in this project, especially up on Highway 80. The areas that we will have on Highway 80 that will be developed will be a combination of retail, commercial and multifamily. And that is all in the areas inside the city limits of, of Martindale. Beyond that, we get into single family, which will be the predominant land use in this project. The plan right now is a mix of different lot sizes, um, and it'll all be site-built, um, site-built houses.
What, what are your lot sizes going to be?
Uh, as of right now, it's still in, uh, still in, you know, the planning stage. So we've looked at the R4 designation from a single family standpoint. The 42 foot lots there, that is something that, that we've looked at. But we haven't fully landed on what the final lot size mix is going to be. It's large enough, it's definitely going to be a mix. So there will be multiple lot sizes, multiple product offerings. And, and, and this project.
Could you just blow that up slightly so we don't see the wording on the bottom? Just to see where the road actually is, or I'm, I'm having a hard time. I see 80, but if you could point to things too, then. Apps. Oh, look on ice cream.
I didn't even like want to tell you all that, but just, uh.
I do that on my TV all the time.
Thank you, okay.
I can see that too.
So within that residential area also, we'll have multiple community parks, uh, mini-tized and, uh, and improved park spaces. So you see those in kind of the, the lighter, the brighter green areas is where we kind of have a plan. Um, so from an access standpoint, the, the access, there's going to be two main accesses on Highway 80 on the north side. Uh, both of those would be divided collector type roadways. Um, so think four, two lanes in each direction with a median will be the connection for both of the, uh, intersections going to the north, which is screen right. The idea with that and the, and the field that we're trying to create with that is a sense of arrival, a sense of community. Just that, that kind of grand community entrance, uh, coming up a Highway 80. It's a beautiful drive up and down Highway 80. You want something nice to drive into from a, from a neighborhood perspective. So those will be, as you can see, a lot of open green space on both sides of those entrances, uh, to provide kind of that open, open feel. Right now, we have shown a projection to the north, uh, again, screen right, to go and connect to the project to the north of us. There's obviously been multiple master plans on that project, multiple different concepts on that. The assumption is from a community standpoint, from a transportation network standpoint, a connection from, from that project down to 80 as well as their connection to 142 makes a lot of sense from just a, from a district, network distribution standpoint. So we have that planned in, as well from a, from a connectivity standpoint. Water, we have, so back up a little history on this. This project started with one tract and has grown to a larger, a larger project. So when we were looking at our initial tract, um, which is the tract at the bottom of the, of the screen, we, uh, have engaged with Martindale Water Supply Company, uh, looked through, you know, their ability to serve water, what infrastructure requirements would be required to serve that tract. And we'll continue that dialogue with them to expand, um, the project as we have done. So, um, we've provided and are planning on, uh, some onsite water, uh, improvement. Some storage tanks is likely and a pump station is likely what we're looking at, uh, which will be good to serve, to help the, the network, the water distribution network overall. So that'll be a, a benefit for, um, for the entire service area. The big one has been wastewater, obviously has been the point, one of the points of discussion. You can see the existing, uh, treatment area directly to the east of our project, right down there at the bottom of the screen. We are directly adjacent to, to it, um, and have, you know, done a lot of the same investigations as, a lot of deja vu I was hearing in the last presentation. That's the biggest opportunity in this project. The project of this size can bear the cost of a new wastewater treatment plant. It can bear the infrastructure burden of installing that, building it. Um, and then as we presented in the term sheet, dedicating that back to the city of Martindale for operations. So in order to do that, um, is what is necessitated the need for the reimbursement district for the mud. And in order to, excuse me, in order to finance those improvements. So all of, uh, just for clarity's sake, to make sure we're on the same page, the district that we are discussing would be a reimbursement district only, not an operating district. In that the customers, the citizens that would, that would live here would all be retail customers of the city of Martindale. The district have no desire to be a retail utility provider. But with our, with our plan, with the space that we have allocated, we have the opportunity to not only, excuse you, to not only construct that wastewater treatment plant, but give space for expansion for future city growth. So, um, like Jason said, the goal here is to find those opportunities for synergy to, to be able to do something that benefits both the city and the development. And I think that's, that's a huge opportunity. So with that, I'll turn over to Julian to explain kind of the mechanics of the district. So, Julian?
Hi, I'm Julian Kugel and thanks for having me here. I, um, I'm excited. So, um, I'm originally from New Braunfels and I've seen a lot change on the I-35 corridor. And, um, this is an exciting project. My college roommate kind of grew up in the Martindale area and this is a great community. So, um, Jared, thank you for your time last week. I appreciate it. And we did listen to a lot of your ideas and Jason and Chris. You know, we've been thinking about it and I think we came back with some really good ideas for the community, uh, for this project and for the city of Martindale. So the wastewater treatment plant is important and we know the city needs assistance on that. We have the opportunity to create a mud. And as Chris pointed out, we have no interest in being in the water and sewer business. Um, I think Martindale does a great job being a sewer provider and the Martindale Water Supply Company does a great job being a water supply company. So the mud would just be the financing entity for the public infrastructure. But one additional step is it's an entity that can maintain the drainage and detention infrastructure. As Chris pointed out, there is a lot of drainage and detention facility infrastructure here. And one thing that kind of overwhelms a lot of new communities is you have an HOA. The HOAs do an assessment, but a lot of times that assessment's not enough to maintain that drainage and detention infrastructure. They can't do the mowing, they can't do the maintenance, it gets overgrown. And you get 10, 15, 20 years down the road and all of a sudden it's not providing that drainage protection that those homeowners in the adjacent land need. So the mud can step in and do that. It has the ability to levy a tax on the property owners only within the boundaries of the district. So I think that's important to kind of bring that point up. And I know y'all had, uh, TAC Redwood here last night. So I don't know how much the city council knows, but I do feel like that's an important point to bring up. Um, we're here tonight, you know, maybe not as far along in the process as TAC Redwood, but we do have the legislature meeting and we have, um, we're proposing to create a mud over the 600 acres. Um, we've worked on a bill that follows the legislative template. So it's a standard mud. We're not getting too tricky with ours. We're not asking for any special powers. It's water, sewer, drainage and road infrastructure and the ability to finance that public infrastructure. Public being the key word. We're not asking for, um, you know, private, any private powers. It's, we view this as a public partnership with the city of Martindale. Uh, Jared very quickly pointed out last week in the call, well, if he moved forward with the legislation, you know, what's left for the city? And Jared, I will point out that, you know, if we're going to create the mud one way or the other, but we want this partnership with the city. We don't want to be in the retail water and sewer business. So that's kind of our incentive to work with the city on this process. Um, we do feel like we're bringing some other desired benefits to the city of Martindale that are unique to this project that I don't think anyone else can offer. We have the ability, we have land that we can allow the city to use to do a strip annexation to landowners to the north of us, if the city so desires. And our developer has indicated a willingness to work with the city on that. If that's something that the city wishes to bring adjacent landowners into the corporate boundaries of the city. There's a mechanism in the local government code that the city can do a strip annexation through our tract and there happens to be that high power line that would be a perfect area for that strip landowner. And that's one of the terms we included in our term, uh, term sheet that we would be willing to work with the city on.
Is that shown on the map, the strip?
Yeah, so do you see that red, okay, you see the three yellow pods kind of on the right-hand side? And if you look immediately above that bottom yellow pod, you'll see a red line. You see that red line? That's the high line.
That's the LCR, right?
Yeah, the, the, the orange dash.
It's an orange red.
The, the dash line, I think, is it as well?
Yeah.
So you get to touch that one there.
I didn't touch anything that time, so if I had an iPad in front of me, I would certainly mess it up because I'm known to do that. My technology skills are awful. That's why I'm an attorney and not in tech, so. But that's the high line to get to the adjacent.
So you're going to use the LCR easement for strip annex. Is that, is that correct?
I'm not, but the city can.
I'm just, I'm just asking.
Yeah, we own the fee property to that. So it's a way for the city and, you know, it's something that we have put forth in the term sheet if that's something of interest to the city.
I, I had one other quick question. On the lower left corner, that road says Southeast River Road. And I was curious, I mean, I have property on Southeast Ri- River Road, but that's way over here. I, I don't see how that.
It, it, Southeast River Road almost parallels Highway 80 for a significant distance.
Oh, another part of it does.
And then it.
I don't know. So I think you, I think you're mixed up on where, where this is right now.
Well, I see Southeast Riv- Well, I see Southeast Ri- River Road right there on the lower left-hand corner there. And I thought this property was on north of eighty and I think of Southeast Ri- River Road.
It's on both sides of eighty. It travels Highway eighty, sir.
Okay, I'll have to drive out there.
Yeah, so it's on and it's not a true north, south, east, west, because it's. But it is on both sides, so we have, you know, I would say definitely two-thirds the bulk of the development are on what I call the north side of eighty.
Real quick question, question, can I back up? Is this common to do strip annexing with a transportation line easement?
Yes.
With L C R, since L C R A has, has the, they control that, they control that easement.
And that's why a lot of municipalities, okay, so there's been some changes in the state law. The last ten to fifteen years where a lot of municipalities have started to like mud districts again. For a while municipalities and muds, I don't want to say they were at odds, but the, the attitudes kind of changed. And one of the reasons they've changed is there's a provision buried in the local government code. That allows muds to have the strip annexation provision through the middle of them. The second, and I was going to talk about it, but you kind of opened the door, is a strategic partnership agreement. So if you recall, and I think it was three, started three sessions ago in the legislature. And then two sessions ago, the Texas Legislature severely limited municipalities' abilities to annex land. Within their extraterritorial jurisdiction, you either had to have a petition from a landowner or have an election. Where all the voters within the area proposed for annexation voted for annexation. And the legislature has just, for lack of a better term, kind of new your city's abilities to grow. There's a carve-out on that, that a city may enter into a strategic partnership agreement with a mud district. That provides for a annexation at a date in the future. If the city so chooses, it doesn't require annexation, but it can set a date in the future or certain conditions where. And this, I put this in the term sheet, it wants the district finances our public infrastructure. If the city wants to, they can annex us and it allows the city to bypass those restrictions for landowner petition or an election. So if we get twenty years down the road, the mud has financed their public infrastructure and Martindale decides, hey. We want cotton seed farms in the boundaries of Martindale. Y'all, at your sole choice, have the ability to annex it in pursuant to the terms of a strategic partnership agreement.
Now, how long has that been, as far as law?
So the city of Houston was the first, they introduced that probably, and you're going to make. Ninety-five, ninety-seven maybe, and it was initially limited to city of Houston. It was a bracketed bill and then those brackets got removed sometime in the two thousands. But it didn't really gain common use until the legislature started taking away cities' ability to annex in the E T J. So the last four years, all of a sudden, all these cities are like, wait a second, your mud's not too bad. And let's talk about your mud. So it's become a really popular tool to allow cities an avenue for future annexations.
Has it been tested in the courts?
Not that I'm aware of, because the statute's pretty clear. City of Houston's been doing them for seventeen years and I'm not aware of any litigation, but. I'm not aware of any litigation, sir. The other issue and you know, it allows the city to collect sales tax from commercial businesses within the district. So here, the majority of our commercial right now is in y'all's corporate boundaries, so you're going to connect, collect that sales tax anyways. But if there's additional commercial sales areas in the E T J. If homes have commercial businesses where there's sales tax revenue, that sales tax revenue would go to the city. So the city would be collecting retail sewer revenue off of this project and sales tax revenue. Chris and Jason instructed me and Jared made it very clear, okay, so we're going to have a development outside of our E T J. You're going to have residents that are going to impact the city of Martindale. And this is going to, you know, it's going to have an impact on the city. You know, what's in it for the city? So we started talking internally and one idea we came up with is. We're going to, our residents are going to impact y'all's public streets, we're going to have vehicular traffic, we know that. And I've done this in a couple of other districts is start collecting a fee from our builders. At the time that they build that first home, have the builders pay a fee that gets paid to the district. And then we remit that fee directly to the city. And y'all can put that into a special fund for improvement or maintenance of public streets within the city. I'll turn that money over to you, y'all know best how to manage your public streets within the city, but.
Before we, before we annex into our city, Lemon?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, and I've done that in other districts. Because we do recognize that we're going to have an impact on the city.
What about, what about law enforcement?
So county sheriffs normally provide.
We have our own police department.
Okay, within the city, right?
In the city, yeah.
Yeah, so I, my understanding is Caldwell County sheriffs will be providing law enforcement for this area.
Well, they do interact.
Okay.
Caldwell and, and Martindale do interact.
Okay, my understanding was we would fall under the jurisdiction of the sheriff's office.
Because you're, because you're, you're not on the city, that's understandable.
Okay, but we thought the road connection fee would be something that would help minimize the impact. I drove down Main Street tonight, it's pretty charming, I can see a lot of future residents wanting to come down here. So you know, we thought that would be something that would help the city.
What kind of, what kind of money we talking about?
Thousand dollars a connection.
Thousand dollar connection, one time?
Yes, sir, because you couldn't, I don't think, in all fairness, you would want to charge it on each land sale and there's.
Still have any connection with who we have?
So we're looking, and you know, this is not written in stone, hence this is a bubble plan, because we're still working on the land plan. But right now, they're looking at approximately fourteen hundred connections. So. Aggie math. One point four million?
Over what time, what period of time?
So we have homes commencing in fall of twenty twenty-five, Chris?
Correct.
Is that what I remember and it's a five to seven-year build out?
About seven years.
Okay. Yeah, I can't, my crystal ball's cloudy on the economy.
Roads are, roads are very expensive, I'll tell you that for a fact.
They, yes.
I know that.
That's why I need a mud on this deal to help finance those roads. Water, sewer, drainage and road infrastructure is very expensive, I know that. So.
And the county parcel that's, you know, white is right in the middle of all that, correct? The, the, the land that's not in our E T J.
Where is the county?
It's a, it's a pony-shaped donut kind of in the top right-hand side of the project on your screen. Kind of that ninety-five acre, sixty-five acre, single-family pods, track one, track two, it's kind of in that area, it's a really odd shape. But, but I mean, it's part of this. And this wasn't in the term sheet, but we would be following, following all Martindale development ordinances except for, you know, a couple of. Of clarifications that we have in the term sheet, even that Caldwell County area.
What would those two be?
The first one was just a clarification on the drainage ordinance. Where, like I said, this is a kind of a unique drainage situation with all the floodplain. So we were just being proactive and letting the city know that we will be accomplishing the flood control through excavation within the floodplain. That'll require us to go through the floodplain administrator, which I think Jared, you said, that's your.
Yes, we run through our engineer.
Yeah, so it'll be reviewed by a cities engineer and then approved by FEMA.
Hey, I've been through this with the city of San Marcos, y'all have like a modeling scenario? And I'll, I'll ask the same question I asked ten years ago. When Sam Marcus was trying to do a bypass ditch on the Blanco River directly to Martindale. And I asked the question, I said, your modeling techniques, has it ever been done with a real event? So if you say, we have a model, it's going to raise the level three feet or two, say three inches. Okay, it's three inches, it's going to raise the level three inches. And then there's an actual event, how accurate is that modeling compared to an actual event? And I never got a straight answer on that.
So about four years ago, you know, it was actually.
I'll tell you what, I want to ask you these questions, dude, because I live on the river and I got flooded fifteen.
Right.
So I'm very sensitive to.
Right.
They tell you a lot of things and, and pervious cover and drainage, but engineers can say all this, but mother nature. We don't, we, you know, you probably know this, I've said it multiple times, we're in Floodway Alley.
Right.
We're in Floodway Alley and, and Martindale's in the, and flat dab in the middle of it.
Right.
And you're in, that's, your job is because of your project, you have green space. Now, another question, are you, are you looking at the new updated, I guess you're with the new updated floodplain maps? It went from twelve inches to twenty inches.
Right, yeah.
Base flood elevation, so.
That's what I was going to point out, is about.
That's going to be a major, major concern for the city and our residents is, is the flooding issue in this area. Because not only you, we got the smart terminal, we got Kyle, we got Sam Marcus, it's all coming to Little Town of Martindale. So I'm going to tell you, I'm going to be very, myself, be very sensitive to that conversation.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So they, what I was going to say in regards to the actual events, about three or four years ago, maybe five years ago now. NOAA, I would not even be able to think of what that acronym stands for right now. But NOAA redid a calibration of all the, of all the rain events in Texas after Hurricane Harvey. And after two thousand eight and after nineteen ninety-eight and all the different flood events. And so we're using a new calibrated rainfall intensity based on those rainfall events. So everything that we do and FEMA requires us now, floodplain administration's required now, we have to follow those new intensities. The other thing I'll point out just from.
That, that, I mean, you're going to have to educate me on this because rain intensity, I mean, I can't grasp it, personally, I can't grasp it. But I guess we could talk about in the future, but I'm just going to let you know, you know, it's a sensitive subject for me.
Right, and this is actually also just for clarification, there, the, the main creek of the floodplain is on the south side of Highway eighty. And this finger actually doesn't hit the river until past one thirty. So where all of this drains, actually parallels the San Marcos River to the east for about another eight or ten miles before it actually joins with the river.
Isn't that Morrison Creek?
It is Morrison Creek.
Morrison Creek goes in before one thirty, it comes in just past this, actually on the land where that flooded into. So that's way before Sable, that's only a mile downstream before you stop that now. I can point the property out, I, I lived on it for three years, so I can tell you.
Yeah.
Four hundred acres.
Yeah, once you get down into this area, there's a lot of interconnected, interconnectivity of floodplain, that's all going to be included, that has to be included by FEMA requirement.
I know you don't want to hear that word, model, but we're required to submit that in order for plan approval.
Right. But yes, that's why I pointed, that's why I started with that, because I know the sensitivity that we're very, we're very keyed in on, on making sure. There's not going to be a three-inch rise, not going to be a one-inch rise, it's a zero rise, and that's actually.
You're saying zero rise?
Zero rise.
What about the potentiality of the Walton Group building their wastewater treatment plant that will discharge four hundred and twenty thousand gallons a day at capacity in, in Morrison Creek as well?
So that will be, the, the, that's actually not as much as it sounds like whenever.
I can answer that one.
Go for it.
So the reality is a four hundred and twenty thousand gallon discharge, it's about that much water.
That much in comparison to what?
Nothing.
Like a pipe, like, like if the creek bed was a pipe, is that what you're describing?
Yeah, so the discharge, I actually, because I protested on behalf of one of my clients. And I learned way more than I ever wanted to learn about discharge. About, you know, a hundred thousand gallons is a little more than a garden hose. And a five hundred thousand was about this much into a creek. So the volume of water from these plants, these wastewater treatment plants, isn't significant.
Especially in relation to a rainfall event, so a rainfall event will fill that creek up. A, a wastewater discharge will trickle in the bottom, because it's a consistent trickle, to be sure, but it, it is more, it is a trickle.
I, I've had a question about this for a while. As it relates, this, this project's close to the river, but no other is not. Given the, the little amount of water that's being discharged comparatively to the creek bed. I would imagine that a lot of that water evaporates as it makes its way towards the river and, and very little would actually reach the river. Would there become a concentration of? Bad stuff, put it that way, in that creek solids and, and nutrients and the rest? In, in that creek bed that when a rain event comes would, would increase the.
That's why Cherryville's getting a seventy-five percent recharge, pre, when you cycle.
In order to get the permit and then as part of the monitoring and the operation, the short answer is no. Because it has to be treated to a certain level to.
You know what that, what's that creek going to be, to T C Q standards?
Oh, yeah, so we.
So, so Mike.
I, I, go ahead.
They address some standards in the term sheet, which we'll, we'll get into tonight.
Yeah, so y'all would be the operator, because it would be a city plant, so I'm going to defer back to you. But it's public wastewater, so it has to meet the T C Q requirements.
We know about T C Q. Trust me, I know about T C Q, so I want to get on that subject, but go ahead.
So I've never, so Jared, in answer to your question, that's a great question and something we get asked a lot on my mud plants when we discharge, because it is a trickle. And it has never been an issue, because it does evaporate if it goes into a dry gully and there are not solids. Because what is treated, and there's a clarifier, correct me if I'm wrong, I know just enough to be dangerous.
You go on your own.
But there's a clarifier that removes those and that sludge gets removed and hauled off, so.
I was, I was more, I was more concerned about the, the potential nutrients left in the creek bed that would create algae growth if there was a.
What is actually discharged is plastipotable water, so.
Oh, you're still talking about five five two point five, man, you're talking about.
You're throwing out numbers way above my pay grade, but it's pretty clean water. Because the solids are removed and hauled off.
I'm totally, I, I am totally, you, you got me totally confused, I'm totally confused now at this point, but.
Sorry, Mike.
Continue on, continue on.
So what, but you're asking great questions, Congressman, I appreciate this, so I like this.
Well, I'll tell you right now, I'm a river guy and that's just, that's, I mean, I.
I grew up on the canal, so I appreciate this.
I've been, I've been involved with multiple protests down the road for so many years, I didn't want to count it, because. I, I'll make my little speech and I'm done, but you're going to discharge into the San Marcos River.
I hear you.
Okay, spring fed.
It's actually.
This is not.
The city.
This is not.
Ultimately, the city will be discharging into Morrison Creek.
Yeah, and that goes into the river, and as Mr., as this gentleman back here said. Matthew, that he is correct, Morrison Creek is right outside our city.
I hear you.
Okay, so that's, that is, for all about the rest of the council, that's a very sensitive subject for me.
But my counsel, I think like with what she's saying and what I'm hearing is that it would ultimately be up to the city. So if the city standards are, like, we did, we need to set that, we need to make sure we're doing that as a city. We, we can't be telling them like what they're going to do, because ultimately they're saying, the city is going to do it. So we need to make sure that.
There's another question, how, what time period, you talked about, talk about doing a mud, it's over how many years? Before y'all turn, well, that's about the subject, how many years y'all gonna turn this? Over to us as a city?
So.
So you're gonna have to go through the permitting process, not the city, am I correct?
In conjunction with city review and approval.
Well, wow.
That's what we're, I mean, we are here tonight with a plan to work with the city, sir. And we have a path. That we think is a great plan to do this partnership with the city. And I think we've come up with some great ideas to address the city's wastewater needs.
Well, basically, I don't want to get in an argument with you, but basically, we do not discharge into the San Marcos River at this point. We have an evaporation pond system, so. At this point in time, we do not know, nothing goes into the San Marcos River. So I'll leave it at that, I'm sorry if you're interrupting you.
You're fine, I appreciate, I appreciate the line of questions, they're all excellent questions. So going back to this. We need municipal utility, we would like to partner with the city, so and we'd like to take advantage of the legislature being in session. This is the first step. All we're asking for tonight is consent to the legislation. This is not formal consent to the mud. And I want to make that point very clear. Jared was very clear that. The count, he cannot recommend to council that they get formal consent to the mud. Um, it's premature, because council would need an actual development agreement, there's still more details to be fleshed out. And Jared's exactly right, that's a fair point. But we did come up with a term sheet of what we felt were important deal points based on the conversation. And that, you know, if the city is in agreement, I have the draft legislation that I previously circulated. And we would like to go forward with getting at least the. District created through the legislature. In that legislation that I circulated, there was a very important provision in there that. We can't proceed with a confirmation election until we have formal city consent. And I do want to highlight that, so we have to come back with y'all, this is the first step of many. And so I don't want to put the cart, you know, the horse before the cart or the cart before the horse. But I would like to take advantage of getting this done through the legislature and then continue having these discussions. Um, I know Chris has been talking to the city engineer. We need to work with city attorney on a development agreement. Um, I think council member McClabs raising some issues, but you know, certainly merits some attention and further discussion. Um, and we're open to that, um, I'm not gonna walk out of here and you're not gonna not see me again. This is gonna be, I think you and I are gonna have some fun together.
No.
I'm ready, I like Martindale and I'm ready to come back, so um. Ask questions, I'm here to answer. I'm passionate about doing this the right way. So um, I'm from central Texas. Development is coming, whether y'all like it or not, y'all had a nut on your special council agenda last night. Y'all had Lanzola talking about a project, I mean, y'all are in the path of growth. And so it's, y'all probably have another nut in two weeks, it's coming, guys. So let's, you know, I think we have a pathway to set a model for great development. Um.
I got a one, one more line for you.
Yes.
I used all of them.
Bring it.
What's good for the river is good for Martindale, I'm straight right through that, what's good for this river is good for Martindale, and I'll leave it at that.
That's fair, that's fair.
So you might want to do a little research on your.
Well, can I say one thing though?
Go ahead, go ahead.
I grew up swimming in the Kamau River, a quarter of a mile downstream from the discharge point of New Braunfels. Big wastewater treatment plant and never thought twice about it. And I would jump right in the river and my kids, I let my kids go swim in the canal right below. The discharge point in New Braunfels. Big two million gallon plant is right there. On the Guadalupe downstream and we all jump in the river, I don't think twice, I'm not worried about the water quality.
You know, we should have been here back in before nineteen ninety-eight, it was, I would not swim in the San Marcos River. So finally, we had to get talk Sam Marcus, our our sister, our sister city up there. To do a proper, proper plant. And that's when, yeah, that's why we have this beautiful pristine river, because it's a five five two one. And San Marcos uh recycled seventy-five percent, okay? Twenty eight, back before ninety-eight, I wouldn't swim in this river. It's foot of suds and everything, that's that's my whole, I want you to take this away. About me, I don't know about the rest of the people here, for me. That river is why people come here, and this is what Martindale is all about, okay? We we understand about development. But I'll tell you straight up about me. That river is gonna be protected. And 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 I'm, I'm telling you right now, you're gonna have a problem with me, I'll be straight up honest with you, I'll be honest with you. That river needs to be taken care of. And development's coming, yeah, you could tell me all that, and you just admitted to me about swimming the cold melt, I would still want to swim in my backyard. Okay, that's why I don't want. You can talk about flows, you can talk about flooding, we're talking about discharge is the main issue, okay, so I'll leave it at that.
I don't think the discharge from this proposed plant will impact the quality of the San Marcos River.
Well, that's a good point, so five five two point five with seventy-five percent recycle, you will achieve that.
Well, I want to thank you.
I'm sorry.
Presentation.
I'm sorry about that.
Was there any more we do in our.
Any questions?
Yeah.
I think I've spoken enough.
Questions in our packet, we have the term sheet and the proposed legislature. Oh, it's on there.
What was your name again, I'm sorry.
Nice to meet you, Julian. Nothing personal.
Oh, I don't take it that way.
Nothing personal, but please.
Jared, do you have any questions or?
Yeah, I was wondering, i- in the term sheet, it references um exempting subdivision regulations regarding areas for public use. With the statement that, you know, and you can see it on this map, a lot of that area remains green space. Um, some of that that subdivision. Ordinance talks about land dedication for community facilities or public use of that open space. Could you, was there a reason why? That or um was being accepted that the city could should consider? Um, as we evaluate the term sheet?
You're talking about section A?
Yeah, so so it's a subsection or section C subsection A.
Right, see. That was more so, I think, from a maintenance side. Um, dedicating that all of that drainage area to the city. The the, as Julian was pointing out, the mud will be taking maintenance of that. And so I can't remember exactly the section of code that we were, uh, with the with the verbiage of the code that we're talking about.
It the the, it it generally describes a two options given to a developer who's subdividing. Uh, one is to dedicate uh open space for use of parks and or community, community use. Um, and then the other option is to to pay in lieu of that.
So what we were going there for is to give y'all the option of, we were going to offer if the city. Because some of that was within the corporate boundaries of the city. If the city wanted to come back and say, hey, you have the mud, y'all maintain this and keep it on your books. Um, and not convey it to the city, so that's kind of, we were leaving the door open for that discussion, we weren't sure where y'all wanted to go.
How much so, so it's not really a drainage issue as much, it's more of, well, I mean.
It's have dual purposes, so. I'm a big amenity person. And on a lot of my detention drainage facilities, I like to add an amenity feature on top of that. And right now, we're kind of early on in our planning station, station, stages, so we're not sure. How it's going to incorporate, but a lot of times we do. Hiking trails around these detention features. Parkland, um, if there's a dry bottom detention feature, it may have like soccer or. Play feature, we just don't know yet, so I don't. Chris and I didn't want to put something out there that's not going to happen, so. Chris colored it green. And it's going to be green and.
I'm a box of crowns.
But we envision a lot of this will, if available, have a dual feature and amenitize it. But it may not be conveyed to the city, Jared, under y'all's rules, so that's why we carved that out.
And then um, there's a. A feature on on this land use plan in the, I guess it would be the southern portion or on the screen, it'd be on the far left. The that's labeled a state residential, that area is in a pretty substantial flood hazard. Um, space, it's it's the back end of it is. Floodway, the front of it is floodway, and that area that that's situated is is in a flood hazard area, a hundred year flood hazard area. Um. The the, I guess what would be, what would happen there for to become a residential would be a bunch of homes on stilts, is that kind of your?
No, that's not the intention on that, the. And there probably should be a note on this plan clarifying this. The land use boundaries are subject to the final floodplain evaluation, so.
Okay.
Um, if those lots are within the still within the limits of the FEMA floodplain, then there will be no lots back there.
And it'll become green space.
It'll become green space, correct, um, yeah, no, no desire to do anything on stilts, none of that stuff. Um, the state residential, we expect there also, because if that was developed as residential, it would be larger lots on septic. Because to get sewer over there would, for that small of an area, it would be cost prohibitive, so it would be large lot residential if it was developable.
Okay, that makes sense.
And the retail is the orange or the red?
The red.
Red, okay.
And that could be a mix of, you know, some small garden office retail.
For the multi, for the multifamily, what what's the plan in the multifamily?
Placeholder.
Right, as of right now, a- again, you know, we don't know exactly if we're gonna be able to get that much land from a uh. From a floodplain study standpoint, if we do, typically, it would be a garden, a garden apartment.
Sure.
Um, type of type of product.
I think we wanted to show also the the mix of the opportunity.
Sure, sure.
She said a placeholder, to show the mix of what we.
Trying to show that this has the potential to be a tree master plan community and have a little bit of everything, different lot sizes. You know, and a tree master plan community has. You know. Anywhere from entry level to move up, you know, multifamily for like singles or. Aging parents, um, commercial, neighborhood commercial, where you can go run to the little grocery store, the dry cleaner, a little neighborhood restaurant if you want. And, you know, make this a nice community in Martindale. That was the goal of this, but, you know. First step, we're gonna be back here with actual plots. Um, flood studies, um, you're gonna probably get tired of this, so.
The next question I had, um, the different tracks. Are they gonna be developed? Um. Fully from front of the front of Highway eighty back in sequence of track one fully developed, then track two fully developed, track three fully developed, or is it kind of going to proceed in stages from front to back, if you will?
It'll likely be more stages from the back, um, the two entrances, the track one, two, three were just placeholders to give acreage. Uh, not from a phasing standpoint, the phasing, the the goal is to have multiple builders going in multiple places at once. So both entry roads to the north, you know, kind of being in the first phase of two separate builder products, and they kind of come together in the back.
Is there um? Any? And impediments to connecting those connectors, those two connector streets? Um, in the earlier phases of these projects, or is that going to be connected? Near the end, right now, there's there's, you know, the notional arrow connecting them, you're kind of near the back, but. Um. Was that, the the reason why I bring that up is. As we get into the subdivision ordinance, it does talk about multiple um access points. And and subdivisions of a certain size and and things, and I know we're using a. Um, a connector type road with with different, that's divided between entrance and exit.
Right.
But connecting those two halves, if you will, would that be achievable in the early phases? Or is that something that the the city would be able to request, or is that not really feasible from from your standpoint?
Um, well, two things, you, I mean, yes, we're, that's why we're doing the divided roadways, it's gonna be a lot of additional cost. In order to get back there with divided roadways, and we're doing the roundabouts also to kind of accomplish that same thing. From a traffic control standpoint, um, roundabout's gonna be way more efficient to move people back into the development. Rather than just an intersection, uh, we're following Caldwell County's uh ordinance on that. From a secondary exit standpoint, because of the of the burden of that drainage in the front. So um. You know, pending the flood study, if it comes back and it and it looks, you know, the final flood study looks different than what we have on here, and we can make that connection earlier. That connectivity is gonna be better, the earlier we can make it, there's just a, uh, you know. At what point is it even possible to get through that drainage?
So that was one of the concerns, because. The drainage issues, that you didn't want to build a connector that may flood. So until we flush out what the actual drainage situation is, you don't want to show something that may be underwater if there's a flood.
Yeah, and I wasn't sure if it would even be feasible to to knowable yet, but it's something that I'm sure as we get into subdivision process is going to be a concern and.
It makes sense for us to have the connector if it's a viable option sooner. But right now, you know, it doesn't make sense to build a road that we know is gonna be underwater, because that's when you need that emergency connection. And um, if it's gonna be underwater, it doesn't make sense to have it.
And another question, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're good, no, I'll just, that's my main main concern besides the river. Is the traffic is gonna be insane as we grow in the next ten years, I mean. Hopefully, everybody's already anticipating that, but. I mean, eighty's already backed up and we don't have any houses over here, you know, so.
So we'll have to do a TIA in conjunction with the tie-ins to state Highway eighty and traffic signalization, that's all required, so.
Hundred percent, yeah.
What's the road on the right side where the arrow goes to the far right up there, is that, is that a road there?
That's a projecting road to future, to future development.
I mean, the the red line, I mean, is, oh, oh, that's your future development where it goes to the right?
No, that's just a projecting road to facilitate the city's traffic network as it grows out. We stub our street to the property line, so the next guy can pick it up and he can.
Required by city ordinances to step it out.
Right.
So that's our ETJ on the right side of that arrow currently?
Yes, sir. And eventually, you know, the idea would be that as that development continues, there's a connection to one forty-two. That connects eighty to one forty-two.
Wondering the timing on that, too, it's gonna be.
Yeah.
It's gonna be.
Well, I will say this with tack redwood further to the north.
Mm-hmm.
And you know what happens on the practice.
Yeah, we talked about that last night, and it's. It's coming, so.
Big issue.
Big issue.
Um, last question I had was, you mentioned not wanting the mud to be in the retail wastewater business. The issue of lift stations and the infrastructure maintenance operations not addressed here, it might be addressed in a future development agreement. But what's your, what's your intention as of, as it sits today regarding? Lift station maintenance and operations and and the sewer infrastructure maintenance?
I had anticipated that, since the city would be collecting the retail revenue. From the wastewater, that we would convey the wastewater system to the city.
Okay.
What what time period are we talking about, just, I mean, I I won't hold you to it, what?
Okay, upon completion.
Yeah.
Of the infrastructure and a certificate of completion. Um, that it was built in compliance with the construction contract, it would be conveyed to the city.
What about the, you said Martin Del Water Supply, a supply is part of that, so you'll be billing Martin Del Water Supply? Or would it go through the city, or how how?
However y'all handle that currently, it would be that same situation.
And the same thing with garbage?
Yes, sir.
I'm still a little confused, uh, so we we built, explain, we, y'all build the plant. Y'all get it, y'all get it, you get it together, so. Once you build a plant. When, when would you turn it over to us?
Upon completion.
Upon completion at that point, so. You, I guess we'll get into fine detail, so upon, so then we would be responsible for the maintenance and. And all the above.
Also be collecting revenue from.
So y'all, like he said, I'll be putting lift stations in, all that on your, on your properties to that plant.
But I don't know if there will be a whole lot of lift stations. But I don't know if there will be a whole lot of lift stations because everything will be flowing down to the wastewater treatment. Gravity lines.
All of it will be gravity lines, will actually be reducing, because we'll be eliminating the need for the current wastewater treatment lagoons. So y'all have infrastructure in Highway eighty that runs up to get to that wastewater. Intercepting that infrastructure and bringing it to the new plant.
So what, what about that, can we talk, I'm just, I got more questions, the more we talk, I just got more and more questions to ask, but they, what about our existing infrastructure? To get over to the new plant, you're talking about our old existing infrastructure?
So we would be, uh, everything to the east of Highway, on Highway eighty and up to the wastewater treatment plant, that would all be abandoned. Because it would be unnecessary infrastructure at that point, it would be surplus, so you can abandon everything past the point where we pick it up and bring it to the new plant. So where would that be?
It's that purple in the middle of our project, yes, sir.
The, the, the one at the top.
I got it, I got it, I got it.
The purple at the bottom is the, what?
I got it, I see it, I see it. Well, I, I, I just gotta get more educated on this, I just, uh, I mean, the, the cost, the bunny, and, uh.
I think the good thing is, so, um, like, is like right now, that our, having to do like as a city is to say. Yes, we believe that, you know, what they're saying as far as our road infrastructure.
I understand that.
The benefits of our city.
I understand all that, but there's so many questions to ask, this is a huge document, but I'm just asking questions for my own benefit.
And so the, um, the water supply company, they already said that they would have the capacity to. To supply water.
For the first track that we have submitted on, for, or submitted to them on, the answer was yes, and we have some, some infrastructure improvements that we need to make also on Highway eighty. To upsize some mains and do some storage on site for them.
Like water towers, you mean, something like that?
Yes, yes, sir.
Oh, millions of dollars, right, millions.
Can I, can I, can I?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm quiet.
I may, the indication was that yes, there will be capacity to serve all of it, the question is how much additional infrastructure will this project have to put in in order to serve?
And that's on our nickel, and then that gets conveyed to Martindale Water Supply. Gotcha, okay.
And then Maxwell supplies the rest?
No, sir, it's all water, it's all Martindale Water.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, that's all, that's all. I'd like to recognize our city engineer, Thomas Turk, and did you have any thoughts or comments or questions? I didn't need to be standing in front of you, I'm sorry. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for the, thanks, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good day or good evening.
We are going to break into, we're having a session to consult with our attorney.
Here.
That's our.
I can move so you guys can get out easier.
Is it raining outside?
Yes, we're good.
Okay, so now we, it is nine twenty P M and we are back in session. We're gonna go ahead with four point one. Motion to award the engineering services contract for the preparation of the city's twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Texas Community Development Block Grant Application and subsequent engineering contract if funded. And we did this.
Jared, Mayor and I evaluated, um, two RFPs for the Texas Community Development Block Grant application. Uh, we intend to submit our complete application. I wanna say, that sounds about right, um, our recommendation. Or, our, our two choices were Duset and Associates Incorporated, they're also an engineering firm. Um, and Freeland and Turk Engineering Group, uh, our scoring together averaged eight-six points, six points higher than Duset. So, we, we recommend Freeland and Turk to, to be our engineers for this grant. If there's any questions, if it asks.
So we need a motion.
So, um, I make a motion to approve the, it's four point. Okay, I make a motion to award the engineering services contract, uh, for the preparation of the city's, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four. Texas Community Development Block Grant to Freeland Turk Engineering Group.
Thank you.
Second the motion.
Yeah, a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
How long is the duration of this?
So there's, there's multiple steps, the, the initial part, um, the engineers will work with the city and our grant administrator. And, and team to, um, develop the submission for the grant. If we were to be awarded, then the engineer would, um. Really help us design the project and assist with the bid construction process. So, that, the timeline for, you know, from today till something being done is probably like, I don't know, three or four years, but. Depending on the size of the project that ends up being proposed.
And the percentage cost is based on the grant and whatever?
Yeah, I mean, this, I don't, if I recall, this grant isn't a very large grant, but.
Maximum is five hundred thousand.
What is?
The maximum is five hundred thousand.
Oh.
For the grant?
Yes.
I guess that TV, TBD means to, to be determined, is that being?
Yes.
So we don't know the cost unless we know what the grant's for, okay?
Well, until we get.
Till we get a word, we don't know the catch, okay? All I have.
And with engineering contracts, you. You are basically required to negotiate with the highest rated, uh, professional service provider first. In good faith and then go from there, so, e- even if the cost was provided at this stage, it really wouldn't have, uh, an impact on the decision tonight.
I think the, the, the work that we contribute to the application is all spring to you.
Any more discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. So. We need a motion to table the next two items.
Okay, so I make a motion, uh, to table, um, four point two. And four point three, until next week.
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
So have we set any dates yet for this, or is it still just?
We have a regular council meeting on April sixth that we'll try to utilize. We'll just have to see what else is getting crowded on the agenda and make some space if. Depending on how that all works out, then. Maybe another date, but we'll, we'll probably try to make use of that regular scheduled meeting as much.
April sixth?
I'd find a vision that we can make things pretty simple so that it's not going to require much time at all.
Okay, is there any more discussion?
So it wouldn't require another meeting prior to that, then we're just gonna try and go until the sixth then, okay?
Any more discussion? Okay, hearing none, then, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the motion. I make a motion to adjourn at nine twenty-five. I have a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
A second.